All right. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakota Board of Education to order today, October 7th. Adam, will you please call the roll?
Mr. D, here, Ms. Casper.
Here.
Ms. French.
Here.
Mr. Horton.
Here.
Ms. Schaefer.
Here.
Do you have a motion for approval of the agenda?
It's a move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Are you none? Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes. Please join us. No budgeting.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's hop into it. Master Facilities. Uh, before we delve into that, I just, um, I know several people in the room last night, um, were at the board event, uh, for meet the candidates and just appreciation of that. Now, a, a board position is a, is an important position, and so I think just making sure that our community is informed, um, and knowledgeable about what each of those candidates represents. I know I am certainly aware that there will be changes after November 4th around this table, and so I just think it's important for all of us, um, to be informed. So thank you, uh, whether you were active participant in that last night or an observer, uh, thank you for being there. There is another opportunity for our community, uh, to listen to that next Monday, um, at 6:30, um, at what, uh, East Freshman, excuse me, East Freshman, uh, from our Spark students. Um, having been, having a history at Lakota East, I will tell you, our Spark children come ready, right? Um, some of the, sometimes I think some of their questions are, are rougher than the community questions.
Oh, wait, wait.
So, uh, looking forward to continuing that, I'll say dialogue, conversation that was started last night, um, so that we can be, um, fully prepared for November as a community. Um, so Master Facilities, uh, a couple of things, um, you know, Elevar certainly here and, and Yen as well, um, can weigh in, but just a couple of things of, of where we are. Um, Adam and I, um, are continuing, uh, I call it the Era's Tour, uh, maybe I'm behind in my Taylor Swift reference.
Yeah.
I don't know if the showgirl one, I think, just doesn't fit. So, uh, we're, yeah, we're continuing that. We have a, I think our last staff one, maybe this afternoon. Um, and then tonight, uh, we will be at Liberty Township, uh, for the first time. Um, that is that, I want to double check my time on that. I always get it confused with Westchester because they are different times.
They're at 6:00.
They, it is at 6 o'clock. Yep, 6 o'clock. Uh, so looking forward to that. And then on, uh, Thursday of this week, we have our Zoom webinar of Building Our Future. That's at 6 o'clock. So that is for any community member who wants to join. You don't have to leave your home. If it's rainy, if it's cold, you can just sit in your PJs and get informed. Um, there will be, uh, like I said, we will record that as well. I know we have one recording from the board meeting, uh, but I think those are really two big opportunities, um, this particular week again. The, uh, I do want to say the one tonight at the township, uh, Liberty Township is abbreviated. It is not the full presentation, uh, so, but still certainly informative, um, and certainly can attend that as well. Um, but speaking of the, the informational session, I do think we're, it, it's kind of feast or famine. And what I mean by that, um, you know, we can have a small crowd. We were at a homeowners association the other day, and there were maybe like three, three or four people. Uh, but then you can walk into a room and sometimes there's thirty, forty people, sometimes there's a hundred people. We were at the library, um, the other day, had a really, really good crowd, uh, with really, uh, robust questions, I would say. Lots of difference of opinions in the room. Um, so certainly kind of, again, still working through that, uh, with a heavy push kind of, uh, this last month to make sure that people are informed. I think that is our biggest challenge and what I mean by that is just, we're large, right? And so making sure that the masses are just have, have knowledge so that they can choose whatever, uh, path they choose for voting on November 4th. Um, the other piece of that is, uh, communications. I know in our last subcommittee, uh, meeting, uh, Betsy had talked about, um, there had been a, a hiccup with a person who had been working on the quality profile. Um, they had kind of backed out last minute. Um, so that is being printed, but there is a delay in that. That will not go out, uh, until probably the twentieth or the twenty-seventh, the week of, of, uh, October. So what has happened is the master facility section of that has been pulled out of that, um, to print separately because it's only four pages. Uh, the, just the size and scale of the quality profile, if you added it back in just to, to print it, is shipping is a delay. But if we pull that out, um, we can certainly hopefully get that in the hands sooner, looking for, uh, hopefully a mailbox delivery of next week. Uh, for just, again, the master facilities portion, the quality profile will be delayed because literally our designer peers has just kind of stepped away and said they have, um, other priorities right now. Um, uh, the quality profile piece, I know Betsy's team is, is going back and forth, uh, with legal to make sure that that meets all standards. Again, our job is to perform, uh, per, not persuade, but to inform. And so because that goes to every household and every mailer, just making sure that we, um, are very clear in those parameters in doing that. Um, anything about the communication piece or the community engagement piece?
I have a couple of questions of those. And just to clarify, the mailers are free, right?
The mailers are what?
The mailers, we, what do we pay for the mailers to go out?
So you'll pay for the quality profile in general, and there would be a separate cost for the mailer, and there's a cost to print it and there's a cost to ship it.
What are those costs?
Uh, total estimated all-ins, about $10,000.
Typically, whenever you see a mailer, typically you can assume about ten.
Um, and I have.
Thirteen if it's bigger.
So now we have to pay it twice.
It would have been a little more if it was bigger, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, a little bit more, but there did offset, like I said, because you would have added the four pages in. The exact cost on the print is $3,786, posted to $6,798, so that's the print of it, for a total of $10,584.
Okay. Um, how do HOAs sign up for meetings?
They reach out to Betsy. Um, sometimes that's the HOA kind of president. Sometimes that's just a member of the community. Sometimes it's a community member that has connections here. Um, and then we just get that scheduled accordingly. Um, we've been to a couple of HOAs. Um, I do think, you know, I forget who says it, maybe it's Tony Bagshaw, who says, you know, the best recommendation comes from people you know. And so I think when it's your neighbor who says, hey, can you come to this? Or, hey, I want to invite you to this, that does give normally a little bit more traction than just the masses because there's that, that connection.
How do they know? Do that?
Uh, we say it in every, um, event. It's also on the website to say that we can talk to any business, any, um, HOA, any, you know, any organization. Uh, but really probably word of mouth and website. Um, I don't, Betsy, is that in the mailer itself? I didn't figure so just because of the, the timing of that, but those would be the two avenues. Uh, we also share that with DPC, President's Council. That's in their notes that they send out. Um, trying to think of anything I've missed. Um, we do share that, um, sometimes with the media. We know we share that with the media. Sometimes depending on the reporter, it makes it in the article or the, um, the airing, but sometimes not.
I think I'm asking these questions because I think there's a portion of our community that are not informed, and that's people who don't have any connection to the school. I've had quite a few people say, all I read is what's on Facebook, and I don't know what to believe on Facebook because one person's saying one thing and one person's saying another thing and.
So the mailer.
Respond with things like, well, they can come to your HOA if someone schedules it. Well, how do we do that? Well, you reach out to Betsy. They just don't know. My parents are a perfect example. They're like, I have no connection to the school other than you, and I have no idea how to obtain the information that is the truth. You know, or how to ask questions about what is true and what is not, and I don't want to do it on Facebook because then you get a plethora of.
Right.
Responses, and then you've got to weed through that, right?
Right. So, things, there's a contract later on that I think we can talk about, just question and answer that, that will help. Uh, but the beauty of the mailer, the positive of the mailer is that it goes to every household, right? It's not just to parents. Um, that is one of the reasons we did not want the delay in the quality profile. I mean, quality profile was not our choice. I want to make sure that's super clear. Like the person who was working on it basically said, I'm super busy. I can't do this any longer. Um, so we didn't have a choice but to pivot. Uh, but one of the reasons that we pulled those four pages out was again to expedite the print and to expedite the mailing, to get that into, um, everyone's hands as a citizen of Liberty Township or Westchester.
So what that is to?
Can I just ask one quick follow-up summary, Isaac?
Yeah, okay.
So, I think we need to think about for our senior citizens, what is available to them after they receive the mailer? So they're going to miss out on the virtual because they don't know about it. They might miss out on some HOAs unless it's their own. You know, I mean, we can put information out there and information, contact Betsy and, and schedule that. We can have other people put that information out again, but again, you're putting it out on Facebook, so they all don't necessarily use that. I mean, I just think that we need to create opportunities that they are aware of after they receive the mailer and probably have those listed in the mailer. Think it's too late to list in the mail, don't they?
Um, maybe not.
Down there on the bottom.
Yeah, there's a QR code.
Yeah.
On the mailer that people can place, be able to see the schedule of events, but they can, yeah, I don't know. We're targeting that audience if that will.
I just think, if you've seen your, that's all you're.
Well, I'm thinking we have the Silver Sneakers event. We also, the library event that we recently had, um, but I hear your point.
We have them. They just don't know about them. I mean, when I pulled up the list and I was like, Mom, here they all are.
Yeah.
She's like, well, how do I know about that? That's a list you have that's sent to you.
How do you get that initial connection?
Right. How to get them on the website to be on the list, so.
So my question, my question was, early, early voting begins, is it today?
Is what?
Early voting begins today, right?
Early voting today.
Yeah. So when are we, when, when it's expected date for?
Next week, be the next weekend. Hands would probably be the seventeenth or eighteenth of October.
And I'll be wrapped with it.
I mean, there, again, the quality profile was set to go out before the designer pulled it out last week. Remembering on that last week. Um, and so when they did that at such late notice, it certainly caused a ripple effect. Anything else? First, community engagement, communication. I've written, I'm taking notes from Christine. Um, as far as, um, uh, uh, Tom had given, uh, Tom's team had given some, uh, enrollment, uh, update information last time at sub, at subcommittee, very, very useful information, by the way. I know Ellie, I think, actually referenced that.
Might have used them.
Uh, last night, um, I know Adam and I have referenced that as well. Um, uh, and I know on social media, there have been some, um, slides shared around enrollment, and, and we, we've gone back to make sure that, um, again, probably in preparation for town committee meetings, just making sure that, that we're prepared for that. Um, one of the things though, uh, that, um, is getting a little bit more new traction is that square footage piece. The new message now that, um, square footage is not really being added in the overall plan. Um, we do have a chart, um, that shows each building in totality and, um, square footage that is added to each building and the total square footage. Uh, but I just wanted you to know that's a little bit of a new, kind of a new pop-up.
Um, can you share the facts on that with us so we can share that with?
Yeah.
People if we hear that.
Sure can.
Yeah, I'd like the, the total number.
Yep. It's a chart and it has the total at the bottom, but it has per building. Uh, just for example, Adam and I were asked at a meeting the other day, um, like the high schools each are about 260,000 square feet. They're added on to each one, but you can get the figure in that. We actually got that first question in government issues.
Right.
Um, that's where we built the chart, but I will share that chart.
Comparison.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
It seems like there's a misnomer that if there are fewer buildings, there has to be less square footage instead of understanding that buildings can have additions and extra square footage on one building.
Um, also, uh.
I heard that last night, the same or less?
Um, so the enrollment piece, like I said, would, would share a lot of time, um, facilities, just inviting people in. Um, we have, the videos have started to, uh, show the buildings where we have done videos to show the current state of facilities. Um, we did one at West Freshman. That one is currently out. We also have done one at Hopewood Junior. Uh, we did one at Adina, and we did one at Heritage. Those should be cycling through. Um, again, I don't have Facebook, but sometimes I, I go down that hole and I read comments. Um, last night, I think people thought, thank you. I'm not in buildings. I'm not there. It helped me get an insight, at least I'm all in for the West Freshman one. Um, again, there's always a myriad of comments on there with different perspectives, but I do think people appreciate seeing and hearing directly from our principals and directly from, from Craig about some of the problems with, within that building. Um, and also we'll say legal has reviewed all of those as well, um, to make sure that we are not persuasive in nature, but, but still, still perform.
What, or, or question? When we talk, when you do your, um, your roadshow, uh, can we start? I, I've also heard lately, and I know we can't combat every, every wrong thing out there, but there's also, um, the misnomer that on some of these older buildings that we just stopped doing things to them. That we've just stopped, we're not repairing them because they know that they're going to be demolished. They said they got that out of a master facility meeting. It was a question I actually got in my neighborhood on Sunday. That they read on Facebook that we just stopped doing things in like West Freshman and Woodland because we knew they were going to be demolished, and that's why we need so much more money. And, and I think the conversation in that master facility meeting was that we were going to stop doing big, like we're not going to put a new roof on Woodland. We're just going to patch the great shaving set, but we're not going to not do anything. And that's one of the narratives that it's out there that that's what, just as a factual information.
Absolutely. Um, and also as far as, um, um, El, Elvar conversations, um, is there anything, oh, I'm sorry, I lost my, couldn't read my chicken scratch in my paper, um, transportation. Uh, we talked a little bit of, of again about in our subcommittee last time, um, you know, we, we, we knew when we made the decision, um, about busing that, um, it would be difficult, um, for our families in nine through twelve to not have busing. Um, Adam and I have been working at multiple, uh, threads. I'll say that, different avenues, different paths. Um, to look at transportation in totality, to see if there is a possibility to have that return in a K-12 model, not a K-9 model, but a K-12 tunnel. It is not possible in the current footprint. Um, it would still be just not the fiscally responsible decision. Uh, if we had a successful bond issue and we're able to reduce that footprint to the sixteen buildings as hoped. Um, we do think that there's probably a path there, but we're working through different folks. We're having, uh, good conversations, uh, with Peterman. Uh, really pulling some data and looking through some data. Um, in the Peterman discussion, um, they said it really comes down, they're, they're holding pretty firm on the thirty to forty buses. This time it was thirty, closer to thirty rather than forty. Um, but routing is really going to be the, the hinge point of how many routes do you have? Where do they go? Um, so they are getting that data, uh, to look at those routes now. So then in about four to six weeks, hopefully we can really have nuts and bolts in the weeds of what those routes could look like. Now, the problem with routes is they change every year, right? Because his kids get on the bus, kids get off the bus, and as you mentioned, grade levels. But at the same time, if you would remember, if you remember last year, we were doing, uh, transportation audits in preparation of the contract that is expiring with Peterman. We just wanted to be proactive, not saying there's anything wrong with our partnership with Peterman, but wanting to be proactive for the RFP process. Um, we had the compliance piece completed, um, that came back, um, in line with, with what we anticipated. Um, the, um, man that was doing it, uh, actually, um, through BASSA, or not BASSA, maybe OSBA. Um, they dissolved his position and did not refill it. He is now a, a private contractor. Um, and so we're still working with him to, to do that, but basically kind of like the enrollment study, we would have two comparisons to do on routing. We would have the one done by Peterman. We would have our private one that is done, and then that way we'd have two sets of data, just like we did with the enrollment study, to make sure that there's nothing out of line or nothing, no anomaly, so that we could go through that with a Fanta's column and hopefully be able to depend. And again, we would have the result, hopefully of no member at that time, so we could know kind of which direction to go. Any questions on the busing pieces?
Uh, my reaction to that is I think that's a very critical piece of information as people are considering. Um, uh, we've had numerous discussions around, you know, busing, and so I definitely understand why it's unfeasible with our current footprint. Um, given that people are starting to vote on that issue today. I think if we could have some urgency with Peterman to do that work a little faster, um, this is, I believe, a critical question around the, you know, it is a crystallization of the operational savings that we could potentially get in the new footprint. And I, I would hate for a bunch of people to wake up November 5th and realize, oh, we could have had busing. And I voted against it because I thought it was different, and it turns out it could have happened, or vice versa. So I think this is a huge issue that we need to press Peterman on. Um, they've been doing this for a very long time for our district, so I, I, I hesitate to think that it takes them four to six weeks to come up with a route solution. I understand it's a new footprint, but they've been doing these routes for longer than my kids have been in school. So, um, the quicker we could get an answer to that and then make that public to the, whichever the decision is, um, I think it's important.
Yeah, we're hopeful that this is an example of a, uh, operational savings and programming enhancement.
Absolutely. But if we need that, we need to let people know before they cast their votes, and they're casting votes today, so.
Anything else? Busing lines? Tom's team, have I missed anything? I know those were the big topics we can use to talk about.
No, uh, no, there's questions that are coming up. Support, get the, the data for you, so just, just keep letting it sit.
Okay. Anything else on the master facilities?
Whenever you're meeting with, uh, the community members, do they come along?
Uh, no, Elevar does not normally come to, um, they, they did come to our, uh, President's Council meeting, um, but normally they are not there in person. Otherwise, uh, otherwise I'm not sure how you would, you would get to your day jobs.
I know.
We keep them pretty busy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can keep the car running if you need.
I was wondering if sometimes there are questions that needed their input.
Um, yeah, you know, if we get a question, um, and at this point, they're, they're kind of rare, but sometimes we do get a question. Um, I know government issues, there were a couple of questions, and I sent those straight to Christine, and she got those back to me like within like a couple of hours, I think.
Awesome.
Um, so very, very timely, um, and sometimes they're just very nuanced, kind of like you said, architectural bent, like very, very specific questions. Um, so we can get those if needed, so they certainly pull together and get that right away. Right.
Do we have a spot, Betsy? Do we have a spot for, uh, people to be able to ask questions during the Zoom?
Yes, the, the chat feature will be up, but there's a Q and A where people will submit their questions to the Q and A, and then you and Ashley will be able to go through them.
Okay.
I think that is an excellent point. Yes, there, so it's not just the president, which would be able to make.
It'd be just like the presentation. We'll have a Q and A also. Great.
Um, as far as board meeting location update, um, I know we had talked about briefly in another planning meeting, um, the idea of exploring possibly, um, a new board location. Uh, twofold, one, uh, I think some of you have shared just at different times, at different meetings, you know, the lighting's not the best, um, and he's freshman on the stage because you can't kind of see the audience without turning the lights on, and if you turn the lights on, that creates some complexities. Um, the stage is, needs just a little, little tender loving care for sure in some areas, and, and just the overall professional feel. And I think also at that time that we moved it into the space, it was because we had very different large audiences. We had a different scale of audience. Um, and there was a safety feature of that. Um, we had talked about, uh, maybe or perhaps moving it into the East Freshman Innovation Hub. And the question became, what would the cost be associated with that? Well, there are costs associated with both spaces. Um, to redo the floor of the stage, um, in East Freshman, um, is about $27,000. Um, it is no longer to a point where it can just be painted. Um, it would need to be kind of, and you can't really just sand it and paint it because there are some, not a safety hazard, I want to make sure I'm very clear, not a safety hazard, but there are some spots in there that if you started sanding, it would splinter, right? Um, it would just not uncommon. High school principal world, not uncommon. It's just kind of common cycle that you have to do that in. So, um, we can certainly paint the existing floor, make it a little, you know, a little grittier. Uh, but to really get it into the shape to act as a stage that would function for theater and things like that, it's about $27,000. There are classes on that stage, uh, again, because space is, it needs to be an issue, so we do have classes there. Um, I asked Bill, or in command the principal, you know, if we were to choose the Innovation Hub over the, um, stage, is there any more, uh, work put on your staff? Like, because when you have to tear down and, and pick things up, and he said, really, it's, they're pretty equal. Do you know what I mean? If I have to tear down the stage, if I have to tear down the Innovation Hub, he goes, they're both very readily used. He goes, so that's really kind of a wash. So the stage would be about, like I said, to, to paint and bring it up to full, what it probably needs to, paint would be paint. Uh, but to bring it up to what it needs to be, be about $27,000. Um, that doesn't fix our, we can replace some lights. We're working on some lights with Craig. Um, and we can work on the professionalism piece. The, uh, Innovation Hub has its own challenges as well, because I think Julie brought up, you know, there was some upgrades made as far as videoing, um, and lighting and, and things like that. You're probably talking in a similar mode of 20 to 30,000 dollars, um, to move it into East Freshman. Um, because you'd have to have the video recording, you'd have to have, um, we'd have to empty some rooms to make sure that the video recording across the hall would be salvageable, uh, or usable to be done in. So it's about equivalent, so my, my recommendation at this point would be just to hold. And the reason I say that, um, and, and I feel like, I feel like a little bit of a broken record, it kind of all goes back to November 4th. And the reason I say that, you know, that building will undergo a renovation. And so without those design elements kind of finalized, I don't want to touch a stage that could be renovated or changed or enhanced. I don't want to touch an innovation center that could be changed or enhanced. So right now, we're just going to make our current existing space work. Uh, we'll give it a little, we'll give it some, just some aesthetic uplift without spending a whole lot of funds or anything like that. Um, so we'll do some things like that. We might even paint, you know, paint the stage or thing, um, at least in areas, but, um, I think it would probably just behoove us to wait. Um, and then after November, have that conversation about what that might look like long-term. And if we did have a successful bond issue, we might push that even a little bit further, because like I said, I do think having and understanding those renovations in their entirety, uh, would be helpful before we kind of dealt into that project. Uh, but both have a similar price tag. They're just in different avenues, right? One is more equipment, technology, videoing. One is more in the physical space and the stage and some, some pieces around that.
What's the timing look like? You know, should we go either direction? If it's, if it's at the hub, then that's fine. Uh, but if it was at the stage, would we be able to navigate that through our board schedule or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you can.
As soon, so I just wanted to make sure.
Happens, and Craig, please correct me if I'm wrong, my high school principal, former brain, uh, basically you schedule it, you schedule a couple of months out so that literally on one day you break it down, and then they, they go in and they prep it. It, it's a messy process. It's not a long process. It's just a messy process, right? Whether you're sanding it or whether you're taking up, it's just messy. Um, and then you have to find like the sweet spot of top. The good thing is, yes, um, it's not really used as a stage, uh, because of its current state and because we use the main campus. And so really you'd be displacing some classes. We'd have to make sure there's nothing like orientations, those kind of things that have started to occur. But if you found the sweet spot, there could be a little bit of a lull, and we could get that crap out. Yeah. So not time consuming necessarily, but. Um, anything else in those two, two areas? Uh, we do not normally do business, um, during meetings, uh, but you will see, this is, uh, one thing that's on here, is the fi, uh, final site contract. So the final site contract is our website, uh, provider. The reason that you are seeing this today is kind of something, uh, Christina alluded to a little bit earlier. Um, we would like to be able to add the chat feature to the website. So we think that would be important around master facilities, that you could go and have that, that chat feature. Um, I'll be honest, and you know, I like to shop. I've been spoiled by that in customer service instead of having to be on the phone. That is a nice feature, right? Um, but basically this would allow us, um, to, to have that implemented immediately without being charged actually until next year. Uh, but this would be a five-year contract with our website. Um, and again, it's really only adding the additional feature of the chat bot. I'm going to call it the chat bot. That might not be the right word. Uh, the chat feature, uh, but we do think that is timely for master facilities to be able to do things besides search or look. If you had a question, it could engage you and get you that factual, um, information that's provided in different documents and different things. So that's why that is brought today. I didn't want to wait until the regular meeting just to get a little.
And that would pop up on, when they logged on to the website, that would pop up to let them know that that was available?
Yeah, just like, you know, I was, actually I did that day before yesterday. I just popped up and I started typing my questions and, you know, it kind of takes you or links you and gives you the, it kind of guides you through, particularly if you're unfamiliar, um, with how to get through, how to, how to kind of navigate that. Again, we thought that'd be an important feature just in the timing that we're in right now.
I think with how many question and answer items you put on there, like that would help people without having to wade through all of those to navigate.
Is it compatible with, um, apps?
Betsy, it is, isn't it? Compatible, compatible with apps, the chat bot?
Yeah.
But.
Wow, that's a very good feature.
And so again, just, I know we don't normally do business. We try to keep those to the regular meeting, but because of the timing of that, wanted to bring that so that they can turn that on.
I mean, and that will, that will be through the whole website, not just specifically master.
Yeah, so you could look up, you know, policies, you could talk through, um, attendance questions or, I mean, anything that's on the website, you would have the ability to kind of filter that really quickly upfront with links and directions.
I'm actually more excited about that than the, the question answer for the, the issues.
So that is the only action item, I think, you know, wanted to bring that, uh, and we, again, we'll, we'll try not to do that, but because of the timeline.
I have something named. The door is not.
Not, okay, okay.
Could be my facility or something, that we need to make, to take us back. You know, yesterday there was one claim that I just if you don't have information, it's okay, you can look into it. They claimed that, uh, one of our building, uh, issue of safety, when, when they were discussing issue of safety, somebody claimed there was one of our building that doesn't have lock. They usually like push, push, whatever it is that she was saying.
Um, I, I heard that too, Isaac.
So what, what was that?
Um, I, and to my knowledge currently, and, and Craig says, well, we do not have that situation, I think she was referring to a past situation. I was trying to think of the timeframe in which she was referencing, she was referencing her thirteen years in the building. And so I think she was referring to a past situation, I do know.
When, when she was employed.
She was an employee, so it's not a red, it's not a readily, uh, an issue, it was a past issue that she experienced when she was working here. So we currently do not have that issue.
It, because that was not defined, it made you look like it's something that happened, you know?
Yeah.
Would, would current board or something like recently.
Yeah. No, it was during her timeframe of working as an aide, so that is not a current issue. Um, for those unaware, uh, uh, basically what he's referring to is one of the candidates last night ex- explained that there was a door propped open pretty frequently in one of our buildings during her past experiences as an employee. Again, that was past, not current. Um, and that is part of, just to review, that is part of our training with students and with staff, that you've never opened a door, you certainly never leave the door propped. Um, again, I can tell you that even our high school principals have experienced some issues with kids where they had to address that behavior. Not because the kid was trying to be unsafe or malicious, but because they're being kids and they, they're lazy and they just prop the door open sometimes.
Right.
Um, so we do have some things sometimes that we do have to talk to children about. Um, there was a situation with a door early on, uh, with some ADA accessibility, Mr. Hatfield's team was on that, um, and got that fixed right away, right away.
And I do recall there was a temporary, this was years ago, there was a temporary issue with a door and getting it appropriately fixed, but there was supervision of that area during that time to make sure that there was not any lapse in security, so while they did have to wait for a short period, if I recall, for the repair, there was supervision to make sure that it was secure, even though it was not working optimal manner at the time. And again, years ago, yeah.
Yeah. I think we just need the board, I don't remember if.
So, do I have a motion to approve the final website contract for a five-year term?
Told.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Any discussion beyond what we've had? Hearing none, Adam, please call the roll.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Franch?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes. Now I'd like a motion to enter into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline promotion, demotion or compensation of public employer official for Ohio revise code one two one point two two, do I have a motion?
So, second.
Any further discussion? Um, please call the roll.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Franch?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. We'll go to the, um, specialty.
I'd like to take a motion to adjourn this meeting at 8:58. Do I have a motion?
Two minutes.
Seven seconds.
Seconds.
Seven.
Any discussion? Hearing that, Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Deed.
Yes.
Ms. Katsford.
Yes.
Ms. Ringe.
Yes.
Ms. Shager.
Yes. Thank you.